All right, welcome, everybody. Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, March 27, 2024 City-Vedana Planning Commission meeting. We do have someone here in person now. This is exciting. This should be a very quick meeting. We have no public hearings, but we have a couple items of business. But say it every time, for those who are here and tuning in, your curiosity, your participation, and your feedback is vital to this process as we navigate change together here in Edina regarding the ways in which we'd like to use our land. So without further ado, we'll jump into this with a call to order. Then roll call.
Commissioner Elkhire.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner who?
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Felton.
Here.
Commissioner Honneman.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. Welcome a motion to approve that.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting minutes, which was March 13, 2024. If there are no proposed changes, I'd also welcome a motion for that.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved. Next, we have a continuation of some special recognitions and presentations. And last time, we welcomed Commissioner Honneman to the team, and absent was Commissioner David Elkhire, who is returning to the team. It's nice to have you back, but we'll give you an opportunity to maybe just spend a couple minutes highlighting who you are for those who don't know you and why you're back.
Okay, well, it's great to be back. And starting off, my second experience with the Planning Commission, by missing my first meeting was not the greatest start, but we had a trip planned that took priority for the family. So I can't tell you how delighted I am to be back. I've spent the last year and a half, two years, in Salt Lake City. And it's been a really, having been in Edina for 20 years or so, and in Minneapolis for 30 years, but Edina 20 years, it was a really eye-opening experience for me to live in a place where, for most things, I didn't need a car. We had a streetcar stop on our block, which connected to the light rail, which takes you a lot of places. Not everywhere, it's not New York, but it takes you a lot of places. And it was a walkable community, where we had grocery stores and restaurants blocks away. And it was just, it was really, for me, novel experience and gave me a vision for how things can be that I had never had before. So that was a really fantastic experience for me. And I'm hoping to bring, Edina's Edina, Salt Lake City is Salt Lake City, there's certainly some different things about it, but it gave me a new appreciation for how infrastructure can change people's behavior and give people new opportunities. So I'm interested to see how we can, how I can apply that to life here in Edina. But thanks for having me back, I'm delighted.
Awesome. Great, welcome back. Okay, so next, we have community comment, and this is the opportunity for anyone who's out there, maybe one person in person, that would like to speak about something not on tonight's agenda. You have three minutes to do so. Come up to the podium, state your full name, address, we'll let you know when the time's up. Oh, all right. Seeing none, we'll move on. So again, no public hearings tonight, but we have some reports and recommendations to go through, and that is the confirmation of the working group members, so the appointment of that for the Lincoln-Londonderry Small Area Plan. Carrie, are you going to give an introduction, or is that what you said you could?
I could just start it off by saying, we began accepting applications on February 15. Applications closed on March 8, and we received 39 applications. And the tri-chairs have selected the working group, and I will turn it over to them to announce those working group members.
Commissioner Miranda, Felton, Day, take it away.
So we had 39 applicants, and out of the 39 applicants, we wanted to have a total of nine people, including the three of us. There would be six people chosen from the applicants. And of course, being Edina, they were all very good applicants, you know, so it was a very difficult choice. We seem to have come to agreement on the six primary people. I suggested two alternates in case something happens, because I was on the 44th and France plan, and somebody got disqualified partway through, so I thought it was good to have a backup. So, but there seems to be some disagreement among that. So I'm not sure if one of the other co-chairs wants to discuss any issues, or do we agree that we've chosen the six and plus two, or do we want to just go with six, or?
You guys want to just share the six first, and then maybe get into that part, or is that out of order?
We can present the six first, and then have them move the discussion to whether we want to have alternates or not.
Does that work?
I guess, as long as that doesn't change who the primary people would be.
I don't think so.
Okay. So the six, drumroll, please. The six people we've chosen, and I apologize if I don't get any of the names pronounced correctly, but Nancy Spanous, Steve Brown, Pandya Jignashe, Corinne Griffith, Jim Diley, and Russ Rubin.
Jignashe is her first name, Pandya is her last name.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. Okay, I got it backwards. My apologies.
And what was your criteria?
Let's discuss the alternate part first, and then we can get into the criteria, I think, because that's a longer discussion.
Sounds good.
I suppose can be persuaded either way on their alternates or not. I mean, I love the idea of having a backup, especially, we haven't yet let everyone know, except, I mean, we have on live camera. I don't know if they're all watching right now or not, but if there's something that comes up with one of them having somebody already that has been willing to volunteer their time, it's not a bad idea. You know, but I have not, I have been learning through this process. I've seen the process from just being a resident and attending, and now I'm seeing some of the back-of-the-house stuff. So I don't know, really, what's the best way to proceed with that. And I suppose if someone drops out, we can call those two people that we're thinking of having as alternates and seeing if they want to do it, or is there some kind of, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I mean, in similar, I mean, I was brought onto the Planning Commission because I was a selected alternate. So I think it's not something foreign to a typical process. And as you go forward, if you do lose something, someone, it's important to have that odd number to, if there's votes that come through. So I don't know why there might be hesitation to selecting alternates. I'd like to hear why, but it seems like an appropriate tool to exercise.
In our, we emailed staff during this and said, listen, should we do alternates or not? And we got some feedback that said, just, no alternates, just proceed without them. And I'm like, oh, okay. Right? And that's where my inexperience.
Is staff, over there.
That wasn't me that responded. I'm not throwing anyone under the bus. It is true, we've had alternates in the past. If someone were to drop off, you could go back into the entire pool if you're not agreeable on alternates, cross that bridge at that time.
So they're not like understudies, they're not with the process the whole time?
No.
Okay.
And I think one benefit of, if we approve them now, we don't have to come back and approve them later.
If you guys did have understudies, would you let them know that they, or, sorry, alternates, would you let them know, right, like, when you let the current people know, at the same time? Okay. Okay, cool. And you wouldn't just, like, surprise them, hey, you're, someone dropped, can you come on?
The publisher's clearinghouse sweepstakes were at your front door.
Yeah, I just think from the 44th and France, we lost someone unexpectedly, not fizz-like, conflict of interest. And then myself joining the Planning Commission, I was an alternate. So it's not something unusual to the process, and it really helps things just keep moving and not taking a step back. So I would strongly urge you guys do that, from my perspective, because this is going to go fast, and you're not going to want to have a hiccup like that. What does, what do other people think?
Sorry, I have another question. Will there be a point into the entire, into the entire, like, roadmap where you guys stop, where, like, let's say halfway in, you guys will stop in case someone does drop out, or you guys just won't pull an alternate, or like, you guys are two months from being done when someone leaves? I'm assuming it's not really practical.
It's probably, and it depends, I think, really, where we are at the process and what the next decision to be made is and whatnot, right? And how, I mean, potentially, if you had somebody that had to drop off, potentially, they might have not been very engaged in the process to begin with, and so it'd be better off of the dynamic to keep it at what it is, right? So I think it's a hard question to answer at this point.
Yeah, and presumably, the alternates, you know, I presume everybody who applied is going to keep track of this in pretty good detail. You know, I mean, like I said, and I'm not kidding, I mean, they were all very good applications, you know, it was tough choosing among them. These are people, and Edina has very engaged citizenry, so I'm pretty sure, and if they're not keeping track of it day to day, I'm sure it'll be on Nextdoor or whatever. So, yeah, I have no concerns that, and I want to choose two, just in case, you know, the first one's like, oh, I'm going to be on vacation suddenly or something, or whatever. But it just makes it that much easier.
I think the appointment of a particular person also gives them the heads up to be engaged as well, be ready. Other thoughts? Yeah, Commissioner Smith.
Go ahead, I'll go next. Yeah, just a question here, but if someone does drop off, are you required to have that spot filled, or could you just keep going?
We've actually done it both ways. The time at 44th and France, where we had the member drop off, it was very early in the process. As Commissioner Day stated, you know, it could be problematic if we're toward the end and someone drops off, kind of depends when in the process that they drop off.
But it's good if you're doing straw polls to make decisions to move forward, it's good to have an odd number of people for decision-making. And that, you know, if you just split, then it's like, now, what do you do?
Yeah, our experience in Cahill was, we had a larger group to begin with. So we did lose at least one, actually, two, if you count Lou. Not you, another Lou. And so, and we just continued on, we didn't do anything about it. But, you know, if we, didn't even consider alternates at the time, maybe it would have been a good idea. It didn't hurt us very much, because we had big numbers to begin with. And in my limited experience of working groups like this, the numbers you have matters less than the engagement of the people who were there. So it, not, losing a particular member is, they're not all created equal, if you know what I mean. So I think it's a fine idea to have alternates, just to, as you were saying, speeds up the process if there ends up being a conflict with somebody.
You know, to that point, is there a requirement to attend a certain number of meetings or sessions, anything like that? Like, what would make someone, would you ever take someone off because they're not engaged?
That has not happened.
We are inengaged.
And for people who aren't, in my experience, they've willingly communicated. Like, time to replace me, or I'm out.
Well, answer the first part, I don't think there's a minimum, or a number of meetings and stuff like that, so, we haven't established that.
Which is kind of the point of you guys having three people instead of two, is just to allow even the flexibility for the commission to always have at least two represented at each of the meetings, just because schedules do, things come up in life, and you might not make a meeting, so I think that was a smart thing from the beginning to have three commissioners on this, compared to other small area plans, so keep it going. Yeah, what you got?
I guess, I don't know, I just have a quick question. If we have 11 people who we all agree are high-quality and we're interested in having them, what's the purpose of only having nine if we have 11 people that we're interested in, I guess?
I mean, we have 39 interested. And I think it becomes ease of working with each other, that if it's a finite number, and the ratio is two working group members to planning commission members. Which makes sense, right? And then there is nine people, so it's an odd number if we take a vote.
Right, and kind of the best way to not make a decision is to have more, add more people to the committee. So it's good to have a constraint. I mean, I think nine's plenty, you know, we, nine's a good number.
For what it's worth, the Planning Commission policy, if a member resigns of the commission and it's in the first quarter of the year, that seat is replaced. After that time, we wait till the next year, could follow something along those lines with, should someone drop off the first quarter of the year that this is intended? You could go that way?
I'd kind of leave it to the discretion of the working group co-chairs. Since you have three, you could make a decision, not bake it into this, that works. Keep it simple, let you guys lead well. So it sounds like you have, like, full support from all of us to identify two alternates. Is it a good time to talk about that? And then, how you selected people, or how do you want to proceed?
I think it segues well into, I think that discussion segues well into the process, to be honest.
Okay.
So, I mean, so the alternate piece, I think there was a bit of disagreement on that point right now, so from a simple democratic rule, voting standpoint, I think we have two. But I did think it warranted further discussion, at least around the process, and, you know, at least in a public forum and amongst ourselves, how the process went, what our individual process was, et cetera, right? And to see how we differed on that, and why we've come to different conclusions on different members and whatnot, so. So, I mean, I'll start. So I, you know, obviously, 39 people is a lot to go through, and you have to set some criteria. I'm an engineer, so the first thing I did was make a matrix and a spreadsheet. And it took me a while, so I, you know, I worked through it slowly, but eventually got to, you know, I thought, all right, how, looking at this application, without putting too many numbers, too many ratings, et cetera, how do I start to even make any kind of headway on this? So ultimately, the criteria that I reached, so I took every applicant, I read through their application, and I said, you know, when I read through this, how much, first, enthusiasm do I think that they have to be part of this working group? What kind of relevant experience do they have? And relevant doesn't just have to mean, from a developer standpoint, from a real estate standpoint, in terms of just overall skill, and what did they list, right? And then really, how did they touch on forward-thinking and looking into the future and whatnot, right? So kind of, for some applications, that was easier to assign kind of a number or a ranking to, some applications, not so much. But that was my launching point, right? And I did take into account, I did note for each one, age, the length of time that they've lived in Edina, whether they own or rent, and then whether they live in the Parkwood Knowles community or not. So that was my starting point. You know, I'll say that, being a younger member of the community, and not having lived here as long as Commissioners Felton, Miranda, I didn't know, really, anybody on this applicant list personally, right? Or either from, really, from reputation. So really, the application was the only thing that I had to go from, right? And certainly didn't know that, didn't think that it was possible to contact by phone all 39 people, or to try to interview them, right? It was the application that I had to go off of, which is fair enough, right? When, if anybody on this table's been on one side of a job interview, the first thing you do is you screen through resumes, and you say, who has the best experience, who projects, you know, at least enthusiasm in the form of a cover letter, right? Follow-up email, et cetera, and that helps determine, you know, where you go. Do you, to reduce your number from 39 to 15, 20, whatever it may be, and then dissect further. So, you know, from an application standpoint, right, that's kind of where I got. So I got to six people, you know, or a number of people that had scores close, similar to each other. I tried to use, again, from engineers, so it's from a lean six sigma standpoint, I used a rating system of 9, 6, 3, 1 to give you some differentiation between numbers, so you don't try to assign, what's a nine, eight, what's a seven, what's a six, et cetera, right? So, and then got scores, and then said, okay, now I try to take into account, since I have these scores, and I look at these applicants, trying to choose six from here, and now I try to take into their amount of time that they've lived in the area, their age a little bit, their experience levels, and trying to balance out, do they have experience in a project management setting, do they have experience in a realty setting, do they have experience raising three kids as a stay-at-home mom, right? And how do I balance those experiences? And so that's where I got, right? And again, looking at the applications was really the launching point and where I got to. I thought, again, it was really important to give extra time and consideration to people that even put the bare minimum into their application. And when I say that, there was definitely a difference in applications, so I don't know if I agree necessarily with the characterization that all applications were strong. A lot of people went into more detail than others, some provided paragraphs worth of information, some provided maybe a sentence, or not even a formally formed sentence or two on their application, in terms of why did they want to be on the committee, what was their intent, et cetera. And to be honest, for me, somebody that didn't even put the general time and effort into their application, kind of as if you were reading a resume for a job application, didn't get a high score and was kind of, you know, discarded. So that was where I got, and that, how I did my process, so I can let Commissioner Felton and Miranda describe what their process was, and then I think it segues into our alternate discussion.
Great, cool.
My first experience with the Small Area Plan was just attending the open houses for the 44th and France project, and meeting some of the city council people, and meeting some of the planning commissioners, and meeting the working group members, and the, you know, attending some of the meetings that we couldn't participate in, and being part of the open houses. And I was a younger mother of child then, and it was a real introduction to me to the city of Edina, and how the community works together. And there was no, I was really impressed at how open and the city council was, and how willing people were to listen to other people's viewpoints. And I think the strength of the Planning Commission is that there are nine people here, and there is a general respect for the knowledge someone else may have that you might not have. And so I appreciate that, that respect that the city council has for the community, that the Planning Commission has for the community, that we have for each other, and that we realize that we might not share the same knowledge or information, but that we are willing to respect our fellow commissioners and work with them, and believe in the process without any judgment, and that as a community of engaged citizens. And I'm really looking forward to meeting, not only the people that we've selected, but I'm hoping we meet a lot of people that have applied for it at the open houses. And I would really like to be able to listen to them as well, and hear what they say. So I think the more that we can respect and listen to one another, the better off we're going to be, because it's not just, it's not just one of our communities, it's all of our community.
So I guess on that note, and maybe to Commissioner Padilla's question, kind of what Ryan touched on, what were some of the, I guess, qualifications, or what were you looking for? And I guess, I know you guys met in a separate room as kind of before a work session, was this a more collaborative choice? Or, like, the selection process for you guys, or was it kind of individual, you know, resumes, shopping, and then together you pulled them together? I'm just trying to understand how those...
When, I wasn't on the Planning Commission when the 44th and France Small Area Plan was devised, but did the commission second-guess the analysis that the members of the commission or the subcommittee did to pick up, pick who was going to be on the committee?
No.
I just find this really odd that, like, we're being second-guessed as to what our choices were.
No, I think, I'm thinking what Commissioner Padilla asked, is if someone's tuning in, they might not even know, like, what type of people and collection of backgrounds and stuff were you guys looking for to best represent the working group?
Right, well, there was a form that people filled out, and I think it's a pretty standard form the city uses, because the questions were not, they asked us, so part of the process is, they asked us if we had any additional questions that we wanted to ask, and I don't think we added anything to what the standard form was. And so it asked things like age range, race, and some of these, I think, are optional, maybe they're all optional, how long you've lived in Edina, what kind of housing you live in, and then basically, you know, like, what are your qualifications, and why do you want to be on the commission? Why do you want to be on the Small Area Plan? That's basically the data that we had to work with.
And then I guess when you guys just selected them, did you just try to get a good mix of people? Just, I'm just assuming, so...
Yeah, I mean, you know, the day after, oops.
Yeah, I hope this does not, I don't think this is meant to be like an interrogation, I think it's more informational of, like, just people who might be tuning in, like, just how were these people selected, in your guys' opinion, just very, very quick question, that's, I think that was intent, very quick.
So MJ sent us the output from the city of the 39 applicants, it was all in one PDF file, and the next day, I sent out a email to everyone, to my fellow co-chairs, and I charted out the difference of the applicants. You know, I said what the count was for each age range they gave, how many of each race or ethnicity, how many for each length of time in Edina, and how many with a living experience. And I suppose it's not really very surprising that we didn't have a lot of variety in any of those. And then I sent... And then I sent out basically six paragraphs explaining, you know, kind of what we should be looking at, you know? And it covered, you know, all sorts of things, but basically, the gist of it is, you know, we want people who will look at what the neighbors want, we want to look, we want people who will look at what the goals of the city are, through our policies and, and procedures, and we want a mix of people, because we're not necessarily looking only for the views of people who have lived here 30 years, we're also looking for the views of people who will move here, or who have moved here recently, right? And we want younger people, older people, we want a diversity of applicants, which was kind of tough, because it was mostly white, mostly older, mostly homeowners, so... But the idea is that, you know, of the people that we have, of our engaged residents, you know, how can we pick people who, let's get as broad a mix as we can, basically, what the goal was.
Great, awesome. And so you did that, and you guys agreed on the six?
So, yeah, so we each came up with a list, and we sent it, we did this all by email, and we sent it to each other. And then, again, I created another chart that showed, you know, all the names, and then how many people recommended them, and like, what the vote total was on the side. So there was one person who was unanimous, there were three or four who, two of us would choose at a time, so one person got three votes, three or four people got two votes, and the rest got one vote, you know? Or half a vote, some people recommended alternates. So I, I put that in a chart, and then, so, you know, so it wasn't, there was no unanimity, so I said, well, here's, here's what we have, so why don't we write up what we thought of the people that were chosen, the top candidates, you know, why don't we write up something about them, which we all did. And so, of the candidates that we ended, so at the end, I kind of consolidated what everybody had, and put together a proposed list, including the two alternates, and obviously the unanimous person was on there, all but one of the residents who had two votes were on the main list, and one was put onto the secondary list. And then the rest were all people who got one vote, one or two people who got one vote. And so Merryweather agreed, and Ryan, Commissioner Day agreed with the six members, but not with the two, with one of the secondary members. So that's how that came about.
Yeah, I was expecting this conversation to go really quick, but I think what's good about it all is just like, if someone's tuning in, it's important to see how thorough each and every one of us is with kind of their analysis.
It's important to be transparent.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, people are losing, for myriad reasons, faith in institutions and governments, small and large, all over the place.
Yeah.
And if we keep this behind, behind, you know, behind the scenes, and don't explain our choice, then there's going to be a lot of questions asked, right? In terms of, I wrote a really strong application, why was I not considered, right? So, yeah, I mean, I, you know, that's, I wanted to bring this more into the light, and wanted to have a larger, general discussion, because I, so, you know, being new to the whole experience, this is a discussion that will be used not only with this group, if the rest of us have, are charged in the future with being leads on a small area plan, but potentially future planning commissions, or members of the community that join the planning commission in the future, are led, are given the responsibility of leading a small area plan. Right, so how do we, what, what do we even use as a jumping off point, right? We had to kind of just figure it out on our own, because I've never been a part of this, Merryweather's never been a part of this, Lou has some experience more than we do. But it's important to have a discussion of how this, this process goes, and what's the strengths and weaknesses of the existing system. So I'll bring it back to the application piece, right, and this disagreement over the two alternates. So again, you know, I was, my jumping off point and my point of reference is, was the application, right? And that's the information that I've given, was given, and was used, and used to determine my choices. And again, I put a point of emphasis on person, somebody that seemed interested, somebody that put enthusiasm, somebody that put thought and care into their application. I don't know that that made its way through every application, and I think some, again, did better than others, and I don't think that everybody did have the same. So, you know, we need, there potentially needs to be a discussion on how much you use the application, how much you use your personal experience with individual applicants, rather than their application, what if they submit a weak application, but you know them personally, right? Or you have, or they have, or they have a reputation, and they only spent a minute on their application, versus somebody who displayed a lot of enthusiasm, and said, you know, I'm really, really interested in being part of this, let's set off all their experiences, gave us two paragraphs of their, you know, how they go there every week, they take their kids to a coffee shop, that caribou nearby, et cetera. I tracked it in the past notes while I'm trying to talk. So anyways, sorry, I lost my train of thought now. But yeah, so I think the application piece, or really that part of the process bears, right, at least some discussion, at least debate in the public forum.
Sure, I think, yeah. Commissioner Alker.
I just had a curiosity, it's not a second guess at all, I was just curious, in the six, were we able to name a renter? And how many of the six live in Parkwood Knowles?
I haven't correlated that, I mean, I'm just curious. I can research that right now, it's not what I...
And I'll let you know, I mean, I was advocating for a renter, I really wanted a variety of shared experiences, and I don't think that ended up in the last mix. And we spent a lot of time over the last four days, and, and a lot of emails. And this is where I think we have to, as co-chairs, kind of come together, and say, there are several bright minds here, trying to get to a, an agreement. All of these people are excellent, all of these people are community members, I would love to work with any of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we got kind of pushed to the limit today. So I, and I had a couple of emergencies happen, so I finally just said, okay, we're pretty much there, you guys decide, we're all in this.
Yeah.
And we're going to make a decision.
Right.
And we did.
Okay, yeah, and I, I mean, I think, just in general, like how the planning commission works, and, you know, we entrust each other to make decisions, and while you guys were appointed to be the small, small area plan working group co-chairs, I think you kind of illustrated a nice thorough process that the community can get behind, and, you know, there's 39 people, so there's not, someone's, a lot of people are going to get left out, right? 33 out of 36, or 39. So unfortunately, people aren't going to get chosen, there's going to be a couple alternates. I think it sounds like you guys have agreed to disagree, but you've selected those two, or do you need our help to, about that?
I actually think at this point, we don't have alternates, because of this discussion. I think we keep it to the six.
Well, the discussion started out by saying we should have alternates.
I know, but then we had this, this discussion.
So what, so what changed your mind?
I really, I respect everyone in the community, and...
If I, if I recall, the 44th at France, we didn't select all alternates, we just went back to the pool.
Yeah, we did, and I think we addressed that tonight, it's just like, if we have the opportunity to, great, and I think it sounds like there is some tension in selecting those, but I think we have an agreement on the six, so if we just need to make a decision on those six, and have to revisit that later, that's fine. We entrust you guys, as the co-chairs, to figure that out and make the decision, and if you need our guidance, to kind of settle that, we can, or we can bring it up in another, maybe the next planning commission, we can identify the two alternates. But it sounds like you guys have agreed on the six, and maybe it's worth moving on.
But it's only going to be harder in the future.
Yeah, but let's just, maybe we plan to pick it up next meeting.
I don't, I don't think we should be continuing this. This, we are dragging this out way too long, I don't understand, no other small area plan did anything like this. And I'm, I'm willing to answer questions, that's not a problem, but...
I don't, I don't, I personally don't have any questions, I just kind of want to know who the six and the two are, and...
I mean, the person that, so Ryan had a problem with one of the candidates, and she got two out of the three votes, and so that's why I put her down, because it was, you know, two out of, two out of three, because we didn't have any more three out of three.
I don't want you to mischaracterize that, because I don't have a problem with the applicant, I have a problem with their application, right? So you keep going back to respecting members, can I finish? Can I finish? No, I guess not.
I think, yeah, I think I'm just gonna, I think we're not going to get anywhere.
You said that there was two votes, and my, two votes to one, and therefore I was overruled, there wasn't any knowledge shared.
I'm sorry to jump in, guys.
Simply disagreeing with the process.
Sorry to jump in, I, I think we just need to make a decision on those six at this point, and then we can revisit this. It's not necessary to the process to have that, it sounds like it's not going to help anything right now, but maybe we can get there next meeting, or the one after, or just be prepared for a choice, in case that event arises, but I think it's important for people to understand that we're all people making decisions too, and nothing's going to be perfect in this process, and there's going to be tension in the decision, but it sounds like we have six very qualified people to represent, along with you three, to hopefully get this small area plan in the right place.
If I may say one thing, you know, I think this is just going to highlight the difficulty of the small area plan, and so I think if we kick this down the street, we're, we're just leaving ourselves in for a world of hurt. It's just my feeling. If we don't learn how to, how to have conflict and resolve it quickly, then we're just going to be stuck in a mire of indecision this entire process.
Sure. I, I see what you're saying, it sounds like we can make a decision mutually on the six, right? Isn't that the first goal? Yeah. Commissioner Padilla.
I just want to clarify, our charge here tonight is to approve the six people, is that correct? Okay, so I think that's our job right now, to do that, and as we alluded to before, there is an odd number, you, you as co-chairs are an odd number, and that's a directive we have, and every committee is to have an odd number, so that you don't end up splitting votes. So I would say, we take up our charge here, we vote on the six, and then you guys, your three, so, you know, you won't have anything that can't be decided amongst the three of you by voting.
But that contradicts the, because we had a two to one vote, and you're saying to ignore it.
I'm saying you go with whatever the three of you decided.
I'm saying, I changed my vote after this conference.
Okay.
Okay. What does everyone feel about confirming the appointment of those six right now? Do we have a motion?
Motion to confirm the six names.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. Congratulations to those six people, one of which is here, it looks like. Right, that's you? I mean, there's, it's a common name, maybe there's more. And that is that, for that discussion, and again, we have no public hearings tonight, we have only chair and member comments, and then staff comments, so I guess I turn it over to any of the members of the planning commission that'd like to make comments. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Bennett. So just two things, right? I'm really happy that I've made a decision on, on the six, I appreciate that. I just want to also commend the co-chairs for working together to, to get to that. Clearly, there's always going to be some level of tension on decision-making and stuff like that, and, and I just want to say, that's very normal, and that is kind of what's supposed to happen. I think going forward, as you guys work together, right, you're going to go through a set of stages, right? You're going to form the team, you're going to have even more conflict. As we look at the small area plan, you're going to probably bump heads with the six that you've selected, right? That's, again, all normal. And I say that because I don't want this to devolve into a situation where you can't resolve issues, right? It's just a matter of communicating and making it transparent. So I want to, 100% commend you guys for even taking it up and working through it. Clearly, to me, it was a very thoughtful process, and I know there's tension there, but I think that's going to get resolved. But that being said, I would suggest in the future, right, if, you know, we could take the learnings from how you guys went through your process of selecting candidates, and if we could somehow agree as a commission for the future, what should the selection criteria be? How should we organize applicants, and how do we go through a process of selecting them that's consistent? So everybody's using the same method, and if it has a vote, for example, that you have to make a vote for, that that's really clear what the next step is. I know you guys were making it up as you go, but I think if we could somehow come up with a set of guidelines for the future, that might make the process a little bit easier. So that's just kind of my two points there.
And I think, Lou, you might be able to share that email that you sent out to us. I mean, you did a lot of work kind of setting this up, and providing us guidelines for how to go through this. And I think we all bring our individual selves to that selection process, and I think that's the power of working as a commission, that it doesn't have to be, in the end, we picked people that some of us agreed on, not all of us agreed on, but then in the end, we reached an agreement together. And I think that was the important part of this.
Isn't Kissinger the one who said, "A good compromise is everyone's equally unhappy with the result"?
Yes. But hopefully, we have six happy people out there ready to go, right? And that's a goal, I mean, with these. Okay, so, any other comments? I mean, one quick one is, next Tuesday will be the presentation to city council for the ADU, so Commissioner Smith, I don't know if you want to give an update on that?
Yeah, you know, so Addison and I, we kind of hashed out a little bit today on the final presentation. It was pretty much close to what we covered in the last working session, we just added a few more slides in there. We're really excited. Our approach is that we didn't want to rehash everything from the first time we started to talk about ADUs, and we're hoping that the content was like a, you know, a stepping, sort of building up to this point, where with all you guys' support and input, we have all the key criteria, and we're just going to talk through that. We feel pretty good where things sit, we definitely will be getting a lot of questions, we hope that there's a lot of testimony from residents and in support of it, but I feel really good, and if you guys want to join in and give some testimony too, or have your palm palms in the back, I, I would, I would certainly welcome that. But really good progress, we're excited, and I think we're ready to go by, on, on April 2nd.
Good luck to you.
Any other comments? Yeah, Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, just that, I think I mentioned last time that we had our first meeting with four commissioners for the areas of potential change, and we have set the next three meetings up, so we're scheduled to go for that.
Anything else? Areas of potential change, it's basically identifying, this kind of came up through the Kevin Keyes site historically, and even Lincoln, London area of these areas that are kind of just not being addressed in any other way, minus conflicting zoning and comprehensive planning guidance. So it's ultimately just identifying all of those, and then the next step would be what to do with it.
Right, plus areas we've had, like developer interest, that the city doesn't, that's not part of a small area plan, so there's no real guidance for it, but we have developers like Kevin Keyes, or the, there were... But we have developers like Kevin Keyes or the, there were a few housing proposals in the greater Cahill district and the affordable housing where there's not enough sewer, you know, so, so these are areas where either change is coming to us externally from developers or where we have to do other kinds of planning or some other way of like tying these areas together to think about what we're going to do. So, but the only decision we made so far is that we're not, you know, most of the single-family home areas, you know, we're not, we're not looking at building skyscrapers in the middle of neighborhoods or anything.
Commissioner Day.
Yeah, so different topic, just, but I think it pertains to the planning commission and developments as a whole. I don't know if people have seen recently in the Dynason Times, the article about the accusations of wage theft with the union workers at the Fred. And I thought it was a relevant discussion, a relevant point for us to bring up here in terms of, you know, there's ultimately many sides to the story, but if we, as we talk about, you know, our residents and making sure we respect our residents and whatnot, I would hope that the city is taking that accusation seriously. Again, I don't know the full details, a Dynason article gives me a high-level overview, right? But as we work with developers, you know, I would hope that we would keep that in mind and keep those types of things in mind and that there is, if there, if there is, you know, substance to the wage theft accusations and whatnot, that the city comes down hard on that. I think it's, you know, a travesty that we would withhold wages from, from contractors and people that live paycheck to paycheck, especially in this economy. And I really think it's, you know, important, again, that people pay attention to this issue and that we recognize that and as we work with developers, that we keep that in mind. So, that's it.
Commissioner Elkhart.
Just a really quick story. I'll try to keep my Salt Lake City stories to a minimum, but this one I thought I'd share with you. So Salt Lake City's structured kind of like Minneapolis. There's city council, planning commission, but it's a big enough city where they have a structure of community councils, as they do in Minneapolis. So I was part of the Sugar House Community Council, that's the neighborhood we lived in, and part of the land use and zoning committee. So it's as close to being a planning commissioner as you can without actually being a planning commissioner. Anyway, we're in a meeting one night and there's a discussion about a particular change. It was a multifamily change. And somebody made a comment and a, one of the members of the group, response to the comment was, oh, we don't need to listen to them, they're renters, they don't pay any taxes. Now, my wife and I rent in Salt Lake City and nobody objected to what this person said. And so once my jaw got up off the floor, I said, excuse me, I'm a renter and I actually do pay quite a lot of taxes. In fact, the building that I live in pays about 10 times as much in taxes as it would if it were single-family homes, like a lot of our city. So the reason I bring that up is, well, two reasons. Well, the main reason is, Adana has a lot more renters than it did 10 years ago and a lot fewer renters than it's going to have 10 years from now. So I'm thinking, how do we make sure we engage those people in land use decisions in Adana? Because they're residents, just like homeowners are. And also, I bring up that story just to illuminate that there are misjudgments about renters in general and their role in the community and their rights and opportunities here as citizens of Adana. That's.
Great story. One thing to share, it's kind of gnawing on it after our ADU discussion, you know, last commission meeting and I was pushing for kind of these last-minute changes, couple of which we, you know, made happen. And I was wondering why it was just kind of sitting with me a bunch of last couple weeks. I think some of it's a product of having sat on this planning commission a while, you see certain trends over time of when we're getting it right or we're getting it wrong. And so earlier today, we had a work session and we're trying to kind of tweak some zoning ordinances. And I think it's important for people to understand what we're doing in the background to try to get it more right. Because some of the response, and I think it's an easy way out for us too, is if we don't get something quite close, it's like, well, hey, they can ask for a variance. I think in the same breadth of renters, taking that into context with, say, a homeowner, to go through any sort of process to see us, to apply for a variance, requires a lot of time and a lot of money. So it's not just the application fee, but likely you need to pay for a survey, likely you're paying for someone to provide some sort of design services. So it's also kind of that, that urge for us and I, and I think, and I hope people can see that we're trying to be really thoughtful, but the better and the more we can get it right, not perfect, but closer to perfect, the better we're going to save a lot of people time and trouble to do kind of the things that make sense with, say, the comprehensive plan, where we're trying to go in the, in the future with the city to allow different type of renters, like in ADUs. And that only can start with more ADUs happening. So it's all kind of connected, but I think that's why it was sitting with me, you know, and I've heard from a developer that my wife and I, we went to Parade of Homes a couple months ago, or within a month, and talked to a particular developer that if there is a variance required, they will not pursue it here because of the process and how it's gone before. So I guess it's, it's again, more ammunition for us to kind of keep our ear to the ground, listening to all different vantage points, not just ours, not just the residents who are here, but also the developers, the landowners, property owners, to see, you know, what impacts there are. And I hope people can see, like, we are trying to think very holistically, but the closer we can get it right and respond to like now and the future, the more we're going to make it easier to get there. So a lot went into the ADU process and I sure hope that the council supports it so we can take a step in the right direction for our community and get more worthy residents in our city. So, hope that makes sense to people. That's all I got. Any other comments? All right, turn it over to staff for any comments.
Nothing for me tonight, no council update.
All right, and kind of tradition, as any new planning commissioner has the final word here tonight.
I was hoping I would get to.
Yeah.
I would have been disappointed if I didn't. Motion to a jury.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the meeting has been adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
You can look through the public document and figure out which one. That was the thing, you know, I picked who I wanted based on my criteria, but not everybody.